All right, it's about 6:00 PM. I'd like to open the meeting of the Woodbury Town Select Board for August 22nd, 2022. So we start with an open meeting. So any public comment?
People who are here for, that aren't on the agenda, okay.
Okay. We'll move on to adjustments to the select board agenda. Diana, any adjustments?
No, nothing. I don't think so.
Okay. With no adjustments, public comment is sort of a moot point. We have started to approve bills and payroll orders. Those will be finished after the meeting. We've approved the minutes from the July 18th special board meeting, and we've also approved the minutes from the August 8th regular meeting. So the next on our agenda is board resignation and appointment. So I'll introduce that by saying that Peter Pelz, who has been on the board this last session, is going to have to step down for personal reasons, leaving us with a two-member select board, which we, Diana and I agree, is not quite appropriate. So we regret that Peter's not going to be with us. He's a great ally and has been in this town a very long time and knows things really, really well, and we wish him the best. But that said, we have to move towards a temporary appointment to fill the select board until the next election cycle. Please.
When is the effective date of this resignation?
Last Monday.
Last Monday. So, but he's unfortunately been absent for a number of things for a while. And this was a conversation that we had all together, just agreed that it wasn't probably feasible for him to stay on the board for lots of reasons. So we have to move into an appointment process in order to do this. We've had conversations with two individuals who've been willing to step into that role. One of them is here. It's Michael Gray. Michael has been on the select board in the past and done a tremendous amount of work. And Diana and I agreed that if he was willing to have him step into the select board role until we could formally elect someone at our next town meeting to finish Peter's term, and then we'd have another three-year election, election for another three years, that that would be appropriate, given his depth of experience.
Why wouldn't you go back to the election of the next person? I know you don't have to, but why would you?
Election of the...
Well, Jason was the one with the highest votes.
We had a...
For that position. I'm just, I don't understand why you wouldn't want to do it. The wishes of the voters.
That's not unreasonable. It's not unreasonable at all.
Yeah, but still, it's a hell of a job. And to have somebody step in who can help us is really, I'm really thankful that Michael's willing to do that. It's more job, more work than it was when I did it 20 years ago.
It sounds like Michael's already doing all your job anyways. I mean, all the grants and, well, not all of them, but no.
Some of the road stuff, yeah.
Stuff that you guys should be doing.
Oh, really?
Well, he was, he was doing it. He was, he was on the select board.
That's right. And he agreed. And when we agreed to run, Peter and I, Michael agreed to stay on and take care of the road stuff in the meantime.
I've been getting paid for that too, Monty, so. Now, Peter did call, I spoke with Peter, actually, and his son Alex too, asking me to, Peter called it returning a favor because basically, Peter and I did talk about his running after I had decided not to run for, you know, different personal reasons. Given the circumstances for Peter, to me, it feels like the right thing to do to, to finish out his term. The right thing for myself, personally feeling. But, you know, what I want to do is right for the town too, so that there are people that feel that there should be some type of special election or something.
I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Michael Gray to the select board for the next six months.
And I can tell you that I will not be running for another term after a town meeting.
So that, so that really doesn't make any sense. Why wouldn't you want to groom somebody new? Michael, I'm sure would work. Mike, I'm sure would work for him. I'm sure Peter would. I'd be honest with what I could agree.
People who don't, you know, people who want to call for a special meeting.
I know.
You can.
Yeah.
More alone step in.
But I don't know if, Michael's not going to, if he's just going to work on it for six months, why wouldn't you want to groom somebody that possibly could be on for the future?
And consider running, and consider running again.
I mean, I know it doesn't fit your agenda, Diana, but...
Yeah. It is a lot of work. You might think he's doing all the work, but you know it's a lot of other things besides roads.
I do understand.
Yeah. So...
I just think you should...
I made a motion.
Well, we have people suggesting that a, we have two other options. And I think that we should have to, we'll have to consider those other options now that they've been brought up. I'm afraid that I'm compelled to consider those other options. We have three weeks before this next select board meeting. And I think that we'll go into executive session, and we'll have a discussion about what really are the option, the options that you all have brought up, which is to select the next most votes. The option of holding a special election, which takes us a little while. So we would be in a two-person select board for an extended period of time because we have to warn that 60 days at a minimum. Or consider the request by Peter Pelz to have Michael Gray fill in his temporary, as a temporary for his term. Those would be the three options that we consider.
So you're suggesting that Jason would be a better alternative? Then I'd like to ask you what your, what your qualifications are. Have you been following all the stuff we do and...
We've followed some of it.
Some of it?
Yeah.
And?
Well, I mean, he doesn't need to be grilled. I mean, obviously, it doesn't need to be grilled.
Oh, grilled?
Obviously, Michael is the most qualified at his time.
It's a public service thing.
But I mean, again...
Sorry?
I'm sure it won't be a problem. It's just learning the new things, what's going on in the town, and understand how the process works is the main thing. I don't pay that much to it.
I mean, if we go to a special election, he would have to be interviewed also.
Correct.
Any other comments that you would like to make in regards to the filling of this temporary? It would still have to be a temporary position regardless.
Not again, special election.
With a special election, they could fill for the two and a half years to replace that position, if it was an election. That would be a...
But that election would only happen in March. If you have an election now, it's just still filling until March.
That's correct. I'm sorry, Monty. It would only be a fill, it would be, it would still be a temporary position because we can't do it until town, until town meeting. We can't refill the position until town meeting. So it'd still unfortunately be temporary.
Yeah, Peter was elected for a one-year term.
For a one-year term. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Turkey. I apologize.
I'd like to say something on Mike's behalf.
Yep, go ahead.
He's been real good to work with ever since I've taken over the road commissioner. And he's been very helpful. Knows a lot of stuff. Jason, I have nothing to say to him either, but I have worked with Mike. Guess that's all that's said.
We've never had a conversation or anything to, or no, me.
Right, right.
So we'll have to move into executive session to consider that. But we will have to make a decision one way or the other, hopefully before the next select board meeting, so that we could announce the decision publicly. Any other comments or questions? Okay. Mr. Turkey, can we do the town clerk's report, please?
I'm still winding up the primary election. I put the participation into this Secretary of State's database today and starting back up home on recordings again. Oh, and if we, if the town is ever low on money, we have had somebody that would like to purchase the town forest.
Like to purchase the entire town forest?
Yes. So just something to keep on the back burner.
Can we ask?
Yeah, it's a Lauren Bailey Lance out of Jamaica, New York.
I thought maybe it was Bill looking for a project.
Did they make a, did they? Did they make a proposal? Did they give an offer?
They did not.
Oh, well.
Nope.
Were there any stipulations in there? You mean, did they hypothetically develop it? I guess it's the...
Nope, it doesn't say that.
I need to figure that part out. Can't go down that road.
There are some scams going around. All right, so Robin, what was the total number of votes? I should know, I counted them, but 230. 230. So that was only about, oh, maybe 15% turnout?
It was 175 that walked through the door and 55 was absentee.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Turkey?
Nope, that's it.
Okay. Ms. Brandy, would you give us the town treasurer's report, please?
Well, mine's short and sweet. I didn't create a treasurer's report due to doing tax deposit today and getting everything done. This is an error that was not caught again by the listers. We were taxed on a parcel of the old store. So it needs to be abated by the select board because those, that tax money was not, was included as far as money being raised. The other thing, I received a call today from, an anonymous caller because I'm not going to throw her under the bus. But she had a very legit complaint of, why does she need to worry year to year on making sure she can still have her house and pay her taxes when her neighbor is five years behind and is just building his cult?
His what?
His group, his cult, his...
Oh, his cell, okay, yeah.
And I don't like having to answer to that because I don't think she should have to be worried about paying her tax bill. But yeah.
So I'd like to make a motion that we abate the tax bill that was sent erroneously to the town of Woodbury for $304.83. That amount must be from back when the store was there.
This was off the tax last year.
Yeah, right. For some reason, we had to do the same thing last year and it, they thought they deleted it, but they didn't.
I'll second that motion.
Do you need something more in writing or anything, or?
No, I'll need the minutes because of CPA. It has to be CPA'd.
Okay.
We can't put it in writing.
Oh, no, the minutes, once the minutes are printed and signed, approved.
Yep.
Then it's not like me just going, oh, you don't have to pay that one. But the thing is, so I encourage this person to make a comment to the select board or to the delinquent tax collector because it's not in my hands. And there's no reason why they shouldn't have gone to the sale already, in my opinion.
Yeah, don't we have like five places that were supposed to go to tax sale? And somehow they come up with their own?
I don't remember.
You don't remember that?
I mean, I don't remember the list. I know a lot of people have gotten caught up by that state program that was helping people pay, but the person they're talking about has not connected to government enough to take advantage of that, not that he should, but...
If someone in town is helping other people, they should help.
No, nobody in town is helping other people.
No, it was, it was the grant's name. Had to be applied for. It was federal money. So it wasn't run through us.
You sure? Because I'm sure, I'm sure that Adam Fane did apply for a grant for that.
Brandy sent a, yeah, sent a note in with all the tax bills, telling people about that.
As an option.
Right. Yeah?
I'm sure.
Yeah, I, I helped Adam and I helped George Lehrby. People who really didn't have the, the option to do all the computer work themselves.
So maybe they say you need to hold it, Diana.
We, well, I, never mind.
It's really not funny because when you help these drug houses out like that, you keep it in town, and then they move to other places in town, and it gets really tiring.
Well, you wanted it to be gone, so now it's gone.
But it's not gone.
It's not gone.
It's just recreating.
Well, no, somebody...
He's not going to pay this year's?
No, I mean the drug part.
Oh, no, the drugs are still there.
Oh, yeah, they're in there. Are you that late?
We had a bowl with weed in it and a pocketbook on our front steps when we walked into work. So it's still there. When we leave work, they're in the parking lot using the wifi, waiting for their drug deals to happen.
That guy that lives up above the garage?
He comes over with his pit ball, sits and uses the wifi.
Yeah.
So it's not, it's not gone.
And you're saying he's doing, selling drugs too?
I'm saying there was a wallet left with weed and a bowl and a credit card at our front steps. It's not gone. They're still there. There's other...
And there used to be. There used to be four or five of them.
I got a question about my, in the vet with Adam. So if he doesn't pay his taxes next year, is he going to get another grant? Are you going to help him get another grant? What's going to happen with that?
I don't know what's happening with that program, but I don't think people can come back. I don't really know. It's a state program. I imagine it's got to help, got to, and at some point...
So the reason for helping him with this grant was to try to help him out knowingly in the position he was in? Why was grant money even considered? Why didn't the house just get bought and cleaned up and went up for tax sale?
Well, things have changed in the last month since I helped with that. And he's not living there anymore, but at the time he was. And...
He was living in Berwind.
He never got a, you know, he still doesn't seem to be interested in selling. I think it would be nice, but...
If he hadn't got the grant, it would have went up for tax sale. Somebody worried about it. And now it'd be cleaned up.
Yep, yep. I was wrong to help somebody, sorry.
It wasn't that you helped somebody that was wrong. It's, it seemed like that, it, yeah.
You should help somebody that can help themselves.
The town was like, my problem is, is you were helping out, and I don't have a huge problem with that, but you're helping out a druggie, but by the sounds, you got this lady that's worried about paying her taxes, and you got neighbors that have a commune or whatever it is going. And wouldn't that be something better to spend time on than a drug house?
Hey, that would be a tough choice. If I had to choose between West Woodbury and South Woodbury.
So let's go ahead to next year's taxes. So it's going to go up for public tax sale?
It'll be, it'll be two or three more years.
Two, two years, and then it'll be back up to...
Unless somebody buys it in the middle.
Yeah, I'm hoping somebody, I'm hoping he can decide to sell it in the meantime because I would like to see it. I would like to see it fixed up.
Yeah, that would, yeah, that would be absolutely nice. Okay, thanks.
Anything else on the town treasurer, Ms. Brandy?
No, money is coming in, which is great. One thing that I'm going to nip next year is, is predated checks. Already today, I've got a check that's dated for October 22nd. And now it's my babysitting job. And so next year, when it comes around, I'll be sending out a notice beforehand that I will not accept checks that are dated for October 22nd. It's just, that's one check I can't lose.
You can't just send it back and say, deposit, hold this until...
Oh, I could, but I didn't give them any. I feel like I should have let them know ahead of time.
Do you want to talk about the payment to shelter construction during the treasurer's report?
Well, that's not up to me. I cut the check. He did the work. He sent the letter in.
You want to talk?
We can talk about that.
He hasn't really finished the work. And it's been a pretty strange relationship with him. You know, he originally did the audit beginnings of in March. And of course, it was still, plenty of snow on the ground. And there were a couple of things that he didn't do. And then, you know, it's been very poor communication between me and him. And I've been communicating with him more now as a member of the town hall committee. So I finally called Efficiency Vermont. He kept on mentioning this, that he had sent his, I was trying to get a copy of the report, and he mentioned that he had sent it into Efficiency Vermont for them to figure out how much the town would get for reimbursement. So finally, after not getting the report from him, I contacted Efficiency Vermont. They didn't have the analysis report either. So they contacted him. He thought that they didn't need, need it, which doesn't make sense because he did it for the town office. But anyway, he did contact me, and he sent that report into Efficiency Vermont. But then he asked me, I asked him, he had, and he did send a report with the amounts of money. We were trying to get that in time for that ERPA meeting, which we didn't have at the time with the ERPA meeting. But he had on there to spray foam on the granite sill of the building, so, or to, the enclosure for crawl space.
On the crawl space, crawl space walls.
So I sent him an email asking, well, does that mean that you're going to build the enclosure for the crawl space? And he said, no, we'll spray it on the granite that's underneath there. So that told me that he hasn't even looked at the underneath of the building to understand what's going on there. So I sent him an email yesterday saying that I felt that he, he really should come back and do a complete inspection of the town hall for this report. So I don't think we should pay him anything until, we should either, you know, and I will call Efficiency Vermont to talk to them about this, but I think we should either get another contractor to come and do the whole damn thing over again, or we should get him to come and actually see, because he couldn't see the underneath of the building in March to actually...
And he also didn't go in the attic.
No, and he didn't go in the attic. He's kind of going by my, my impression of being up there in the attic. So...
We do now have some pictures from when Jan Lewandowski was there. But anyways...
So when you do the energy audit, you did put on the thermal camera?
He did do a thermal camera with the walls. He didn't go up into the attic. He didn't have a ladder long enough. That was the reason when he came in March. He did the blow test, and he did scan the walls. So, so yeah, so he just didn't really understand, you know, what we're dealing with, with the building. So for me, I would feel better if he actually came and finished, you know, his inspection and then put together a report based on that. To me, we're paying for something that was sort of half-done and that we've been waiting almost eight months for, six or eight months, so... And I'm happy to talk to Efficiency Vermont about holding on to the payment until the report is completed. I mean, to me, it's not completely...
Well, the only reason it's important, I mean, we kind of know what has to be done.
Yeah.
And the only reason this is important is if there is some kind of subsidy from Efficiency Vermont.
There will be some type of reimbursement subsidy from Efficiency Vermont.
For that reason, we kind of need to have him do the complete job.
All right, well, that's what I, that's what I suggested to him in the email that I sent out yesterday, the past one, that I felt that he should come back and take a look at the under, under part of the building and then give us, you know, what he would do to remedy that situation, and then how much it would cost.
Has the new owner been brought up to speed about any work that's going to be done to the town hall?
New owner?
That purchased the store.
They don't own the town hall.
Okay.
And they don't need to know. What?
It's still in their, it's deed.
That's right, but they own the land. They don't own the town hall. They have nothing to do with what goes on in the town hall.
But if we withdraw, they get the town hall.
Yeah, if we stop using it, yeah. It hasn't happened since 1842, so.
We have to use it at least once a year.
Right, but I figured...
We're not good neighbors.
The old, the old owners were looked in and knew...
Well, they were there. I haven't even met this guy yet, so if he wants to know anything about it. Have you met him?
Yes, same person.
Really?
Shook his hand.
Yep, I haven't met him. Haven't even, well, his car was there a few days after they first bought it, but it hasn't been there for a while, so.
Chris, could you make a point of work? You still have a motion on the floor you haven't voted on yet.
To what?
You still have a motion on the floor you haven't voted on yet?
Which voted, which?
You made a motion, you seconded it. Abate the $300.
Oh, that one, oh, okay.
Didn't vote on it.
I thought we had. My apologies. Thank you for the point of order. Hold this in favor.
Yeah, the motion was to abate the tax bill of $304.83.
Aye.
Second it? You want to second it?
It was, it was seconded.
Okay.
Because with a two-member select board, when you second it, it's...
Well, you can't assume, but you still need to go through the process. So do you agree, Chris, that we should hold on to this bill?
I do. I'd like Michael to feel comfortable following up on it, and then...
I'll, you know, share my conversation with Efficiency Vermont about this.
I'd appreciate that because I wouldn't mind being involved to understand a little bit more in detail.
I'll try to do that tomorrow.
Thank you, Michael.
I mean, this person did my house many years ago and did a great job. And I think the town office, he did a good, good work on, but I don't know what's going on with the town hall, so I'm kind of surprised.
I think because it's booked a will in the last month. And I'm like the same as everyone else, it's hard to find help. And he managed to actually out, getting out of doing all the energy pitch that he did, getting too old to go into haddics and do the work and all that stuff. So I think was probably one of the main reasons it's probably not built by help. Pretty much everyone's having a hard time finding people to help with.
Everybody has that problem.
So I'm off to the treasurer's report.
All right, thank you, Brandy. With that, Chuck, would you give us the town highway report, please?
Yeah, we've got the roads all honed up and they're in pretty fair shape now.
Yeah, uh, we've got the roads all honed up and they're in pretty fair shape now. We'll have Claude come back first of next week, start over. Get them straightened up decent for the fall. Well, the brush chopping, we've made one pass around most of the town. We got the Valley Lake Road to do and Bailey Bridge Road left to do. And then we will start on the second round. We, we got, we placed one culvert on the county road today and we got two more to replace over there. Which will be happening, depending on the weather, then next week, so.
Any updates on the truck?
No. We won't know, the new one, we won't know anything until first November, uh, first of October.
On the five fifty?
The five fifty.
Still up there?
They're working on it. I called him last Monday and they've got the transmission done and got the doors on it, and they're working on the floorboards.
So shall I tell about my call from Upson, or do you wanna do that?
Oh, you had a call?
Oh, yeah. I thought I sent you an email.
You did, but I didn't realize that you had a call.
Okay, so I got a call from Dave Upson. Uh, he's the town manager in Hardwick. Brandy had tried to send him the six, seven thousand dollar check.
I haven't cut it yet.
Yeah, well, don't cut it yet.
No.
So, um, and he said that was not what the agreement was. Uh, we thought, the board thought that.
That's what Greg and I said.
Option was, I figured, you know, the way you explained it to us, that, uh, the option was to either keep trading work or just pay them seven thousand dollars. So we decided to just pay seven thousand dollars, cause we were down a man and.
Just for this year.
Things like that, yeah.
And then next year, we would've went back, but now he's saying that he wants to be paid for last year.
Now he's saying that we owe him for last year, but last year I understood that they didn't like nee- need all of our trucking or whatever it was.
They didn't, and we bought the gravel, the town of Woodbury bought the gravel and resurfaced Richardson Road at the harbor.
At the Hart.
Yeah, and that wasn't enough?
It seemed like it was, cause I, the way I got it figured out was a little over five thousand dollars.
Yeah.
And he says, he's got it figured out to be three thousand, but he's also got the plowing of West Woodbury figured out to be twelve thousand.
Yeah.
And they get up there and they work for thirty minutes, and they're done. Well, twelve thousand dollars worth of plowing is a lumped on gap there.
Yeah, so anyways, yeah, he said it was, Upson's understanding that we either give them seven thousand dollars worth of brush cutting, which I don't know how they figure, what's the hourly for brush cutting? You must have figured it out something.
Figured it up, but I, I, no, I can't quote it absolute. I think it's a hundred and sixty-five dollars an hour.
Yeah, so that would be like a couple of weeks of brush cutting.
Ten days, actually, I think.
Days, whoa, yeah, okay. And, uh. So let it, yeah, he said if we had to pay cash, it would be twelve to fifteen thousand dollars.
Well, first off, I got a call in.
Yeah.
And we'll probably have to make a settlement on last year's of some, if he wants seven thousand. Cause I figured we had a fight tied up in it. But we've also decided that we're gonna buy new tires, put them on low pro, so we don't have to unchain and chain every day we go up there. We're gonna plow ourselves.
All right.
And to hell with that.
Great. You, have you, did you watch that, uh, HCTV?
I did.
Yeah, I'm surprised your wife let you.
Uh, yeah, yeah.
So you got help and help?
Well, one of the select board.
Help and help?
Yeah.
One of the select board members up there just was very, I mean, he's, he said that we've been getting, we've been getting the, we've been giving poor Hardwick a raw deal for years, yeah, yeah, so.
You wait till I see.
I don't wanna be there.
He'll know what a raw deal is.
So you're gonna pursue that?
Yeah, uh, but.
If he wants the seven thousand dollars for the money for last year, then.
Well, Greg and I were talking and I'm gonna start out at thirty-five hundred. We figured we have five thousand tied up in it, another thirty-five hundred is over eight thousand, and I think that's plenty.
Yeah.
And we'll be done with them. If I get too rambunctious about it, they won't get anything. The way I'm looking at it.
Okay. So you did, you said you graded and resurfaced Richardson Road?
We didn't grade it. We resurfaced it and, and done the trucking. We had a guy up there for, uh, I've let it wrote down, it's been long enough now, so I don't, I think it was four days we were up there and resurfaced it. And the town, the town of Woodbury paid for the gravel to do it, cause we wanted to be square with them for plowing West Woodbury. And yeah, this is where we are.
Huh, well, nice try.
Yeah, yeah, and a lot of the problem we've had is with Tommy not being decisive enough to make up his mind what he wants to do. Greg was after him every other day there last fall, getting to, so we could do something and get it paid.
Yeah.
And now we've done a mess.
It really didn't start until they had a new town manager.
That's right.
Yeah.
It's been good for ten years.
Yeah, isn't that interesting? And we went ahead and did that, uh, Nichols Pond Road project at his suggestion.
Well, that was Meyer's suggestion more, but they were in a hand in hand.
Yeah.
But, um, so we're gonna, we're gonna buy some decent studded tires and run that low pro. It's probably gonna cost four to five thousand this year, but that's still less than the seven thousand we were gonna pay.
Yeah.
And we should get three to four years of them tires, if we, if they change them in the spring time, the way they should. So.
So when did they, when they were doing it, what time did they get up there in the morning?
I don't know.
Okay.
We're gonna be there first thing.
Okay.
Cause that's been a bitch up there.
There's no school bus route up there anymore, is there, or? I mean, there are kids.
Oh, yeah.
It must be.
Yeah, absolutely.
There are kids that go to school, I don't know.
Oh, yeah.
But we're gonna, right now the plan, and this could change some, but the main plan right now is it's gonna leave town garage, come to the school, plow the school driveway, go to West Woodbury, catch Buck Lake, Bailey Bridge, Town Farm Road, town offices.
Coming the way back?
Yeah. But they should be back in town by six o'clock, cause they started at four.
Yeah.
It ain't gonna take long to dust this place out, put a little sand down and go up and do that. We've done it twice with that low pro last winter, when all West Argioon started, and it takes anywhere from thirty-two to thirty-six minutes to plow West Woodbury.
Time from leaving the shop?
No, from the time you get up there. We were, we were trying to do it as if Hardwick was doing it, and from the town line, what, Hardwick, Woodbury Town Line, up and plow everything up there. Takes thirty-two to thirty-six minutes.
How many miles is up there for?
Three. Twelve thousand, twel- twelve thousand dollars a winter. That's pretty expensive per mile.
No, he, but he said a lot of it was overtime.
Realistically, if you plow, it's probably on the weekend or after hours, not be early in the morning, you know.
If it snows on the week.
It proves up though overtime, but you know what? That thirty minutes a day ain't gonna make much difference to his overtime. He's still gonna have the overtime.
He's still gotta be up there.
Right, and the thing that, the thing that is, our turnaround's half to three quarters of a mile down the road on, uh, is that, Brock?
Brown Hill?
No.
Kate Brook?
Kate Brook.
Kate Brook.
So he plows right by the turnaround and goes up to the tee and turns around for the, with the Hardwick Town Truck, even if they're not plowing up there. So they plowed a third of it already. I don't get it. I mean, uh, I thought at seven thousand dollars a year, we were being more than generous. They figure they plow fifteen times a year.
That's it?
It's what Greg said and it's what Tommy said. Yeah, real good day. Could almost afford to buy a truck and do it.
Yeah.
Um, but then I guess it's all I got. We didn't get the Coleman Old Quarry Road signed last week, but it's on the agenda for tomorrow.
Okay.
It's gonna be on the lower side of the road up there.
And they might, yeah, I went up there today and, uh, there was somebody parked, um, right on the edge of that road.
There has been, hey.
But if we, you know, I don't see why, you know, we wouldn't do it for Coleman, but I don't see why we couldn't throw up that little section of road. You know, I mean, Swenson basically took over the class four road up there without any paperwork or permission.
What class four road is that?
I don't remember the name of it. The one that used to go out, where their new entrance is now.
Old Quarry entrance?
So. So, I don't know, if you ever go up there, Chris, you might take a look and see whether.
I mean, I've been up there a good bit, but.
Yeah.
I have a problem encouraging that people like that having thrown that road up.
You throw up one class four road to somebody and just hand it to them?
It's just gonna be a.
Well, this is not, I mean, this is.
We've already done it.
Already, we've already done, we've already replaced it. So it's just a little section that was replaced with all that hoopla last year, so.
You could just declassify it to a trail and then the town would still own it.
The thing is, it's not gonna stop. They have four vehicles once they're there at night.
Yeah.
And where are you gonna put four vehicles on half an acre and still live there? So this is just.
Yes.
Where are they going with the bathrooms, huh?
In that little tent they got set up. It's a, I guess it's a little porta potty.
Wonder where they throw that?
They told, they told Bob Martin, they take it to a place. I mean, I, he told me, but I don't wanna pass it on, cause I'm not sure if that's true. So they're living there?
Oh, yeah.
They live there, yeah?
Yeah. They had two dogs up in the camper on one of them hot days up there. So I called Kim Silt and sent Emma. I don't know what did happen to that after that, but.
They probably kicked it out.
The pole of that camper is about twenty feet from the center of the road, so it's still really not out of the right.
It's not out of the right way, yeah.
I thought you'd measured it.
Uh, no, I guessed it, but I went back and measured.
Oh, okay.
It's twenty feet.
What is the, what is the measurement of the class four?
Twenty-five feet. From the center.
From the center, both sides?
Yeah. Same as class three, free rug.
That other road is not even on their property.
So they, they actually own a little bit of land on the right-hand side of the road in there?
What, I, yeah, I was just trying to help her understand what they own there, and, uh, she sent me a Google map. You know, that's not gonna work.
I don't know. I think the town should sue Coleman Parker for even selling that.
Yeah.
I'm sure he didn't tell them up there getting that too.
I'm sure he didn't, and if you wanna help them, I think that's the direction you should go in, is getting them to sue him.
This, in the wintertime, it's gonna be a shit show up there.
Yeah, it is.
Corey's driving as it is up there with, you can see their, their tracks. They're taking a wide corner, but their ass end is right in the oncoming lane.
Yeah, it's right there.
So then you got their vehicles parked, cause nobody plows that. They're living in a camper already, so they can't afford plowing.
Probably can't afford a lawyer to sue them.
What's that?
They probably can't afford a lawyer to sue.
Well, my Jesus Christ, all these free lawyers around the public defenders and everything, uh, they wanna protect the case.
Yeah, maybe legal aid.
I would think your time would be spent better that way than we'd be throwing our road up.
Are they gonna be moving a year round in that camper?
I'm thinking.
That's what they said.
Isn't zoning, doesn't that follow, there's some zoning issues?
It should.
It should.
Camper's not really a structure, though.
It's not a permanent structure.
It's not a permanent structure.
There were people in the tent up there last year.
And a yurt.
A yurt?
Yeah. There are a number of situations.
Yeah, but he's got ten acres of land.
If he built, if they build a yurt, that's different.
How, how is that different?
A yurt is a structure. It's got, you know, walls.
I thought you said meant that a yurt, they can build a yurt. I must say.
But I think Bob mentioned that, that was one of the meetings before, if you live in a camper, it has to be moved every so many months.
Movable.
Movable.
Has to be moved every so much, many months.
Yeah, I'm not sure if that was correct. Has to be mobile, like, could be moved. I don't think they actually physically have to move it on their land, but I'll check that out.
Our zoning doesn't address that.
Yeah, it's state.
But this, this land was sold off from other parcels, right?
And that was probably an illegal subdivision to begin with.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
So I think is, I, legally, I think something ought to be done with it.
Coleman originally bought that from somebody else who used to live up there. I can't remember.
His mother bought that. All that land up there, and they split it between him and his brother.
But that little piece he bought from Ainsworth.
Yeah, he's, that's a name I couldn't remember. But he bought that piece, um.
A while ago.
I'm not sure, one, a long, yeah, quite a while ago, but he did buy it.
Did Peter Myers ever own that? They owned the farmhouse. They didn't own all that land?
No, not way up there.
And I think he bought that property for Ainsworth after he had, um, you know, suggested that the town move the Old Quarry Road to, um, the piece that, um.
He probably thought he could sell it to us.
He couldn't have, cause he basically requested that the town build that road that he later, you know, kinda screwed us for to be able to use.
Kinda.
Kinda, yeah.
Kinda.
I'd say you bet you were over the rail gap.
That's what he does, right? What do you really think?
He does.
That's what he does. But yeah, he bought that, I mean, obviously, he had to own that before he could suggest that, uh, the town moved the, the Old Quarry Road.
Yeah, I don't know the whole, I don't remember, I don't know the whole history, but there was a time, I mean, when Coleman, when the culvert on Caber Road washed out, we were, the town was using that as a bypass, right?
Yeah, they weren't.
And then all of a sudden, he decided to, and then it went back to, I don't know, always been there.
That's when that was built, the spur.
Yeah, yeah.
Was built when the, when the culvert washed out. And that's why we paid all that damn money to keep that open, in case something like.
Could've like it happened.
Cause we need that little bypass.
So I went, went in there today and I, I was gonna turn around in the next property, but there's stuck going down there. I didn't really feel safe turning around, so I went all the way back down to, uh, Blake Hill.
Oh, then the Old Quarry Road?
Yeah, yeah.
That road's not that bad.
No, it's not that bad.
Hey, do you like that building that sits right on the edge of the, right away down there?
Kinda look, yeah, I don't see any, I think I saw the top of a tent way out in the field.
And this is the one right down there, there's the driveway and a building that's set right there.
Yeah, the shed, yeah, yeah.
She's living in that.
She is. Never seen, there's no power or anything?
She's been in a mental institute, I guess.
Yeah.
That's why I haven't done anything about making too big a scene of it, but that's in the town right away, too.
Have you heard if she's living up there, Brandy?
I haven't spoken to her father lately.
I think.
Was, she was sleeping in the tent that's out in the field.
Yeah. Yeah.
That was the spring, right?
Yeah.
And I'm pretty sure that old dragon bus she was running around in is back up there. They'd come down by the house, but I couldn't see who was driving it.
Are the horses there? I think they.
The horses from cows were condemned. They were taken away, but her stallion that was just purchased, her, her father just purchased, um, is for hers.
That's not still up there, though, is it? I haven't seen it. I've been traveling up and down that road somewhere. I haven't seen it now, but. Well, anyway, that's a long ways from West Woodbury.
Long way to route.
So I guess I'm looking for approval to go ahead and buy tires for that truck and get this under headway and we'll go plow it ourselves.
I'll make a motion to approve. Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And would you consider talking to David Upson?
Oh, yes. Oh, I am.
I'm trying to get him to return my call and.
Yeah, I don't know how he found me in Hardwick, but he did.
Uh, he, well, retired there. He wasn't a state trooper. He quit being a state trooper, so he ought to be smart enough to be able to do that.
All right, Chuck, anything else?
Um, I don't think so.
All righty. So, should move on to the ARPA recap from the special meeting on the eighteenth. This was available to everybody and there's still some that are posted up on the bulletin board. People wanna have a look at it, but, um. I don't understand, do you want me to just sort of rifle through these really quick? Is that, do you have a recap?
I don't know. I don't, I don't think we need to do that. Unless anybody is interested and didn't know, didn't get the message to come to the meeting last week. You were on the ARPA committee, weren't you? That was from Michael.
I, I have a copy.
This is the, the new one?
Oh, the new one, no.
This is just the, uh.
That's the CB fiber.
Yeah.
That's CB fiber, MOU. So in terms of things that would have to get done quickly, if we wanna take advantage of CB fiber's offer for having broadband connections basically from the line to individual homes. I haven't seen a map from anybody yet. I don't know if you saw anything.
I did. It wasn't. She did send me a map. I thought I had sent it around.
I haven't seen it.
It just had a bunch of dots on it, basically. It did, one, one interesting thing, though, that I thought about after the meeting, when Mike McGlynn asked about West Woodbury, I realized that West Woodbury is gonna be like five miles from anything that they, any, you know, central office or central piece of equipment that they put in anywhere else in Woodbury and, and come to find out, they had figured that out, that would become from Hardwick.
It'll come from Elmer or Hardwick?
Hardwick, yeah.
Interesting.
So. So.
So the long and short of it is that in order to take advantage of this, they're asking for fifty K and that would be matched, um, by a grant, but if we wanna take advantage of it, we have to make that application by the fifteenth of September. So that is the, that is the, that's the only one that is super time-sensitive at this point.
Ready.
They've asked for fifty K from us. If we pay in, we would be eligible for a matching grant where there's, based on what we heard, there's a pretty high likelihood that we would receive it. So we would max that fifty K, so we'd have a hundred K and that hundred thousand dollars would be used to connect the main lines to individual homes. So they're not asking for money to run the lines. The lines are going to be run regardless if we pay in or not. But if we do pay in, we get another fifty via grant funding and that helps us offset the cost hopefully, 'cause it was a seventeen hundred dollar cost.
Yeah.
To run it from the pole to your house.
Depending on how far you ride.
That's, that's an average.
That's an average. That was, that was an average. That's what she gave us, was an average. Every, it's gonna be unique every time.
And that would help keep the subscription rates.
And that would reduce the overall subscription rates because that is what is essentially gonna be paying for upkeep on the system regardless.
So is that gonna, is that gonna benefit all homeowners in that area?
No.
You didn't get a map on how much you're gonna get for your hundred grand, yeah?
Well, we just talked about that. We, they sent him out a map. I haven't seen it yet. Diana's seen part of it, but.
The map just shows all the houses in Woodbury that have insufficient, whatever.
Underserved.
Underserved, right, which is basically everybody.
Yeah.
The thinking was with that money, um, from the pole to the homes, that if there were people that, um, you know, perhaps the, whatever the expense was, was a stretch for them with their income, that it would be financial assistance. And those folks that could afford it and didn't have an issue with, you know, paying whatever it costs, that, um,
I didn't understand that at all. I thought it was gonna be connecting for anybody.
That's what I thought.
It would be anybody who requests.
Anybody that makes the request.
Yeah. But then without an income eligibility, that would be a nightmare.
Now, you said anybody that requests, you said anybody that meets the request.
No, anybody who requests.
Anybody who requests, because essentially with the best, I think Comcast service that you can get here, you're technically still underserved. No one can get to a hundred megabytes per second in town.
And whether a hundred thousand dollars would cover all of that?
We don't know.
They're, well, yeah, but, you know, that's their estimate and they agreed to do, um,
Yeah.
what's needed, so it goes over. They seem to have a lot of money from other places, a lot of other state and federal grants.
'Cause it's all grant-funded. Grants, bond sales, and then the subscriber fees once it's active.
I would just hate to see us spend fifty thousand dollars of taxpayer money and then having a certain amount of people in town having to pay their own monies to have it hooked up.
No, I don't.
Kind of, kind of like double tipping.
I don't think that's the way it is. I think, I mean, every, well, Michael said that, but I don't think that's right. I think the money is to go for everybody who wants to.
Who asks.
Connect, to pay the connection fee, not to pay the.
I understand that, but it's a hundred thousand dollars. Say, everybody wants it in town. Hundred thousand dollars, is it gonna cover that?
Well, I don't know.
It might. I don't know.
Yeah.
My thing is, is if you have, you're in a contract anyway. Everybody who has Comcast or AT&T, they have a contract. You're locked in now. So you're gonna have to pay the fee to have it undone and then if you can afford it, you pay the seventeen and there is enough to get it waived, filling it out, but it's a lot of money.
Well, people who have Comcast might not want to upgrade to broadband right away.
I have Comcast. I'm fine. Totally happy with it, although the subscription rate was lower than Comcast.
That would be the factor for us, too.
Yeah.
We're happy with the internet service. It's just, if you could say month, you're not.
I don't have Comcast and I am not happy with mine. Number eight on Route fourteen.
Yeah.
So you could have Comcast.
We might have two bytes.
Yeah.
I mean, one of the kids were doing homeschooling. Poor McKenna was getting kicked off that internet all the time.
It's unfortunate.
We have Starlink and we've had it for two months. It's friggin' amazing. We can have ten gadgets. The kids, boyfriends, they're over. TV's running, no bludgeoning. And it's satellite. It works awesome.
So have you weighed all these different options for what it's gonna cost the taxpayers? You're talking about other systems.
It's the money, the fifty thousand dollars that the town is, is.
Doesn't come out.
Has been requested, doesn't come out of.
It's not from the town. It's, it's, it's our, it's our, it's our ARPA budget.
Well, I've understood that.
It's all ARPA.
Yeah, it's ARPA.
Everything that was in this conversation is, is ARPA, ARPA-directed funding. But down the line, you're right. I mean, if the subscriber fees aren't high enough,
People are gonna pay.
People are gonna have to be paying for it.
So you're also putting a limit, like seventeen hundred dollars per house?
No.
That was just an average.
That was an average.
'Cause you got some people that live much ways off.
Further off the road.
Good, we won't have to go out to Brandy's, though, 'cause that would skew the average.
No, but you might have to go to mine.
Twice, right?
So, no, you got houses, for instance, I'm just gonna say like mine. Mine's a.
Yeah.
You know? That's gonna be quite a chunk.
Well, he decides he wants it up camp, go be ways.
Yeah, so anyway, there's a group that's been working really hard on this for a couple of years now and at least a couple of years. And, uh, they're really, they're finally getting to the point where something's gonna be done. They're ordering all the cable. They've gotta deal with the provider. They're, um, gonna start, they've had, you've seen guys out doing surveys and checking on poles and stuff for the last few months.
Yeah, I have a good friend of mine that ties the wires.
What?
I have a friend of mine that ties the wires.
Oh, yeah.
He runs them. That's what he does.
So, um.
And there's no question to what you guys.
There was a person who came to the meeting last week was really.
It's happening no matter what.
Was really very helpful and she would've come tonight if, um.
If we'd asked.
If we'd asked. But she was very helpful, very knowledgeable and.
Now, when this ARPA money first came about, there was some talk about, and maybe they waived this, 'cause somebody said something about they waived it if you weren't getting
Yeah.
tremendous amount of money, that maybe that this internet wasn't the best use of the money in the government ties.
No, this was one of, this was one of the designated, um.
This was fair game right from the beginning.
Yeah, right from the beginning.
From the beginning. Even after they changed the, changed the rules so that we could do.
They released, they released the rules so that it could be more flexible, but this, but, but high-speed internet was always part of them.
And also the planning commission did a survey last year and the ARPA group did a survey this year and they all, broadband came up.
This was the, this, this was the, behind roads, this was the second highest in the survey for, for the ARPA survey. So it was roads, yeah. It's a, it's a ton of them.
Most, the majority of their sound is non-residents.
That's fifty grand.
But the woman who came and spoke, spoke to us, they are really, they happen to be serving kids.
Another couple of months, right?
They, yeah.
Which is a huge chunk, so you're looking at three hundred homesteads is now gonna get.
It's a fact of the taxpayers, but.
Hypothetically fifty thousand and, and for the people in here are saying, we're not gonna change. We, we like what we have, so therefore is it, yeah.
We don't know yet what, I mean, I'm kinda happy with Comcast now, but if something comes better.
I would love to pay less than I pay, I mean, I only have it for the internet service. I don't get any of the other crap that comes with it. Um, and I, you know, I'm paying seventy dollars, eighty dollars a month, which seems like a lot of money to me. Um, and if the subscription rate is lower from, uh, CB fiber, I'm, I'm gonna change in a heartbeat, but.
And Comcast raises their, raises their fee whenever they want.
I mean, you can ask Skip Marcasani about his deal with Comcast for the town hall.
Can anybody that's on, like, any of the back roads, I don't remember Comcast being even available on.
It's not available. It's just the Route fourteen.
It's only the Route fourteen quarter.
They're gonna be running the wires. It wouldn't be available and then.
It would be.
Gonna do all the roads.
It would be the first opportunity that we have essentially full-town access to high speed.
And they'll be starting this fall or this late, so I guess it's kind of almost fall, hopefully.
So because this is the one that seems to be, um, well-thought-out and, um, ready to go, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the fifty thousand dollars. For our CB, 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 CB fiber.
I'm gonna second that motion. Yeah, go ahead.
You can still, yeah.
The fifty thousand dollars was, I brought up at the eighteenth meeting.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, okay.
This is the, you can, uh, you can look at my draft if you want. But there's also some hanging out on the board down there, so, yeah.
I've got one, too, if you want.
Yeah, all the, here, just take a peek. All the cost breakdowns are in there, just so you see them.
I just wanna make sure that the fifty thousand dollars was out there for people, though.
Yeah, it was part of the discussion, because it was, it was part of the discussion with the ARPA committee as well, so it didn't, we didn't come up with it on our own.
So is there a contract or is there a, something we, the town has to sign?
There is a memorandum of understanding. We don't have to, in order to get the match, we just have to send a commitment letter. We don't have to sign the MOU by the fifteenth of September, but we probably can. I just haven't read the whole thing yet. And they do, um, there was some question about whether they're gonna like fill us every time they connect somebody, but that's not gonna happen. We're gonna give them the fifty thousand dollars and then they're gonna report to us.
So it won't have to be on here?
Yeah, so we don't have to dribble it out.
Anyway, so there's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Okay, and then there was another thing. I should've adjusted this or added this to the agenda. Uh, we learned at the meeting last week that our, our representatives to the CB fiber board aren't really doing their job and Michael uh, offered to step in as an alternative, as an alternate member, so I'd like to nominate him to be our alternate member to the CB fiber board.
I'll second the nomination.
Any questions?
Michael, thank you.
I think it's important that Woodbury does its part in getting this in town. Is there importance for all people?
Yeah, it was clearly a high priority in the, even at the meeting, so, and those weren't all people who had filled out the survey.
The only question I had on this was just, I mean, does anybody have any idea what people's monthly rate is going to be when they hook? I can't seem to get an answer from any guy.
The person who came and spoke to us who was on the board, I think she was the chair of the board, um, mentioned that they are non, nonprofit, so they aren't out to make money, so it'll be the minimum, I mean, I can't tell you what they figure is and she couldn't either, but it's not like Comcast where they're, you know, needing to make a profit to, to pay their shareholders or whatever, so it should. There, these, these entities, CB fiber, and there's, the whole state is covered by these communication union districts.
Yeah.
They're basically considered municipality. So it's all non-for-profit. It's kind of like the old rural electric, um, you know, back getting electricity to everybody. It's basically the same idea, yeah. They aren't really a cooperative, but they are, it's a made up of different towns, um, and the towns, you know, have reps that are on the board and they basically run the business. There's one, um, CUD Communication Union District called, I think it's East Central Fiber. They have been an establishment for quite a few years and pretty much have now have everybody within their, their towns, um, served by it. If you wanna check out the possibilities of what this will do for people, um, they do have a website. I would suggest taking a look at it. 'Cause they, they've been in an establishment for only ten or more years.
And you said that CU fiber?
Yeah, EC. I think it's EC fiber.
East Central.
I think that's it.
East Central.
Yeah. I mean, politicians have been promising us this for years and this seems to be.
Well, it's happening.
The way it's happening, yeah.
It's actually happening.
I think that, I think if it was, I think they have an idea that it's gonna be affordable. Otherwise, they wouldn't be going so fast and so far with so much money.
They're affordable and the average person would, they're, might be different. And nonprofit is a lottery area, nonprofit. That's not a great thing.
Well, like you said, it's a municipality, too.
I mean, the town, the town is.
It's just questions that are unanswered and you're willing to step into this and they're pretty important questions.
Yeah, but, well, we've had plenty of chance to ask those questions.
You didn't get answers.
Well, we, we're, a lot of questions and a lot of answers at that. Well, we, we're, a lot of questions and a lot of answers at that meeting on the eighteenth.
And then questions weren't answered, those particular questions. No, they left the water gray area. They didn't answer.
You know, the state and the federal government are putting a lot of money and energy behind these. They certainly aren't doing that with Comcast or Fairpoint or any of those. So I would be very surprised if it's not cheaper.
No, that would be-
Years ago, when I worked for the public service department, their cable used to be a regulated utility. And now it's not. So that, that all changed and there's no telling what they can do now. But this will be. So the next item, our attorney suggested that we talk about that in executive session, so.
The ongoing complaints.
Yeah. So let's just go to, I'll make a motion that we go to executive session for this.
Is that considered contracts?
Excuse me?
Is the ongoing complaints considered contracts?
Oh, forgotten.
Because you didn't warrant it as such.
Well, I'm wording it now.
Why, you can't.
What?
You can't. You have to put in the agenda.
We can decide on a, on, we can decide on an emergency, executive session during the meeting if we want to.
It's very interesting.
What?
It's very transparent.
Well. We could wait and talk about it in three weeks. It's not that important, but. So that would be, yeah, we'd change the A1A to A1E.
Well, should we wait and talk about it after it's more?
I don't think so. I think we're okay.
Why would you want to go into executive session to talk about appliance cases?
That's what the lawyer recommended.
Attorney just suggested it. I mean, we, I guess it's really, there's really not much to tell. If you want, we can just talk about it.
What does that mean to us, man?
Well, we just go and talk about it.
Well, let's just talk about that.
Let's move out of executive session.
We've got a case in court that the previous select board agreed to send for zoning violation on Amesworth Road. And I don't even have a great file on that, but it's been back and forth to court a couple of times. There have been some improvements within the last few weeks. A few vehicles have been moved. There was another status conference today. And the owner did not show up to the status conference. So our attorney asked for another sixty days to continue to try to work with her to get the place cleaned up. So the attorney would like to, you know, know how the, how we feel about it.
They'll start fighting if she don't show up.
How many status meetings has she missed now?
Uh, this would be the second one.
Second one.
Yeah.
So it's just prolonging our expenses, right?
That's what the lawyer wants.
Well, that's what the board decided to go to court, so.
Well, I mean, it took them another sixty days. Doesn't make any sense.
So what would be, what would you suggest the alternative would be?
Give them, give them ten days.
And then what?
Why wouldn't, you can't find them for not showing up?
You can find them. What good does it do to find them?
It can go against their taxes. It'd be a tax sale at much faster.
It can't, though. Can't. It has to be, it has to be according to the law and you can't find somebody for a zoning violation unless the court approves it. The court is the only one that can levy a fine on a zoning violation.
And you've got about a twenty percent chance of getting that.
Yeah.
Can you put your lawyers' fees on?
Eventually, eventually we can put, we can get a, a court order.
Court order for a lien.
For the fees and put a lien on the property for what we've spent on, on legal fees on this case. I'm sure it's up to a couple thousand dollars by now, if not more.
Yeah, it doesn't take much.
So that's the only way we're going to get that.
So basically you got no way to force her to come to a meeting?
No, you can't. I can't force them. Doesn't do them any good not to come, you know.
And-
Stands against them.
And they make it so hard. I mean, the attorney was explaining to me if somebody, even if you had a computer or a really sophisticated smartphone, you have to do all these different things in order to attend virtually.
And this person's taxes were paid up and everything?
Yeah, I think so.
I believe so.
Not interested in selling, which is too bad.
You haven't sent the health officer up yet?
No, I don't think they're living there. I mean, she's not living there.
They're living there.
They're living there.
They're not living there.
They are living there.
Really?
Yeah, they are.
Of course they are.
The state person who I don't have much faith in either, I won't even name his name, has been there a number of times and has also given them things to comply to.
Get my personal input on this was you guys need to draw a line at what you're going to spend on the attorney because this can go on and go and go and go and you're never going to, good chances.
No, the board decided to go, go to court, so.
Well, yeah, but you almost should put a, maybe a limit. So, okay, we're going to spend two, three, four thousand bucks on the car.
And then you don't have a resolution.
You, you, good chances you spend ten, you're going to have one either.
Well, you know, I wouldn't have voted for it to begin with. So what do you think is living there?
Her and her kids and now her new boyfriend?
Her new boyfriend's in there, though.
Funny, they don't have any cars here.
Yes, she does.
You see the lot of used cars that's over in front of the other place?
Yeah.
The kids are obviously in the road crossing back and forth, crossing that road. Running dark and everything else.
It's another thing that the town doesn't have much jurisdiction over.
Right.
The health of people, they live.
The state doesn't either. And it's hard with the shortage of housing, especially low income housing, something like that. Honestly, they're, like we just said, I'd say twenty percent of, right now in this day and age, it's probably five percent. And I bet it's not even that. Success in doing something like that. There's no housing. Put it in and the state's like, they will add and say, what are we going to do with this?
Yeah, there's some, some of those tax cases, too. It's like, you're going to throw somebody out of their house?
If they're paying their taxes.
No, if they're not, it's been still, still, it's hard to sell somebody's home out from under them because they can't afford a few thousand dollars for the kind of thing.
But so even if you go in there and condemn that place?
We don't have a, there's no way to condemn. There's no law that authorizes us to condemn it. That happened years ago when I was on the board and we had a situation up on Cabot Road. We could not condemn. There's no authority. Now we've got a health officer, though. Maybe he'll think of something.
Yeah, well, it's hard to do. We have a new health officer, Josh Corn, who's starting up.
How old are you?
I told him, I told him, you know, it's going to be some enforcement. It's not going to be like helping people be healthy.
Yeah, just don't overwhelm him. He won't be all.
The only thing I could say is you shouldn't put a limit. Say, what are we going to spend on this? How far are we going to go? This can go on and on and on. The attorney's not going to stop.
No, he's loving it. Pretty sure.
Well, I don't know.
Being honest, it's very hard. It's even worse in today's day.
Yeah, they're, and the judge is frustrated, too, because he likes to see some-
Resolution.
Some resolution from motion. Well, I had to tell him today. I went over there, I was by there on the weekend and I went over again this morning and said, there have been some stuff that's been moved. So, you know, there has been some-
Attempt.
Attempt, some small improvement.
So I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Wait, we still have executive session?
No, we moved out of it.
Oh, okay.
Yep. Yep.
Are you going to second the motion or?
Motion, yeah, second it.